I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Susie Rollin, please.
Councilmember Cantio.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salsedo.
Here.
Councilmember Jankovic.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Aye, aye. Motion for the consent agenda tonight?
I'll make that motion.
No, no.
Discussion or changes? Sue.
Councilmember Cantio.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Salsedo.
Yes.
Councilmember Jankovic.
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer.
All right, yes. Citizen discussion for items not on the agenda. For the podium line, I just need your name and address in five minutes.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Catherine Henry. You guys have my address and file letter that I sent you. I already shared with you on June 15th my thoughts for the situation regarding Chief Beulah, but since I had received zero response, I figured it would be wise if I came one more time to try to come to a reasonable resolution of things. On June 4th, the chief was forced to resign for essentially three things: the supposed conduct on becoming an officer, posting his personal feelings on departmental social media, and posting unneeded personal commentary which inserted political and debatable issues. As far as conduct on becoming an officer goes, I would ask that you guys think about what the City of Lowell Police Policies and Procedures states, which is that personnel shall conduct themselves at all times, both on and off duty, in such a manner as to reflect most favorably on the department. And that conduct on becoming includes that which impairs the efficient operation of the department. The whole point of having a police department is to protect life, property, and all rights guaranteed by law. That's in Chapter 2. So, not only that, but the same document requires police personnel to obey all laws of the United States, which should very well include the Constitution. And that unsatisfactory performance may be demonstrated by a lack of knowledge of law. In fact, the same document goes a step further and prohibits personnel from following any order that they know would require them to commit any illegal act. So, when we look at the hotly contested issue, the contested portion of the post was that we at the Lowell Police Department support the legally armed citizen and the Second Amendment. Well, the Lowell Police Department is the city's law enforcement agency, and that includes protecting all rights guaranteed by law. So, the U.S. Constitution, which we all know guarantees the Second Amendment right of the people to keep and bear arms. The Michigan Constitution also, under Article 1, Section 6, guarantees that every person has that same right. So, when he worded the social media post to both give notice to the people of Lowell as to what the men were going to be doing in town, he was also reminding everyone that as a law enforcement agency, Lowell Police Department supports the citizens who are lawful in their use of firearms and that they have the constitutional right to do so. So, for him to state anything to the contrary would have been subjected to discipline for unsatisfactory performance demonstrated by a lack of knowledge of the law. So, he had a duty to ignore anything that would require him to, I don't know, not support the U.S. or Michigan constitutions. But I want to remind you guys that every single public officer in the City of Lowell, every single public officer in the whole state of Michigan, us attorneys, we're all required to take the oath of office required by Article 11, Section 1 of the Michigan Constitution. And that is to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state. That's exactly what he was doing. When he says that the Lowell Police Department supports the legally armed citizen, the legally armed citizen and the Second Amendment, he is by definition stating the support for the Constitution as literally required by the same oath that all of you took, that I took, that he took. So, to punish him for that, there's not even words that go with that. So, we need to also remember, though, supporting the Constitution, it's not personal feelings. It's not political debate. As much as people, whether they're sitting in those chairs, or they're sitting in these chairs, or they're sitting at home, whether they like the Second Amendment or not, or like the First Amendment, or any of the amendments, it doesn't matter. What's relevant is what's in there. And that anybody who's sitting in those chairs took an oath to uphold and support every single piece of that Constitution, whether they like those provisions or not. So, to punish a public officer who took that oath for upholding that oath, it's abhorrent. And it's really disgraceful when people think it's funny to support the U.S. and Michigan constitutions. And quite frankly, it's that kind of behavior that's unprofessional and reflects poorly upon the city and the department. And it's that pattern of behavior that is not acceptable. So, I would ask you to consider that all the chief is asking at this point was outlined in the email that you guys received in our request to place it onto the agenda. He's just asking to be able to retire, as he should be able to, for being just shy of the 25 years that he has put in with this city. And he's asking for the statement that you guys should be definitely having no problem with making, which is that the City of Lowell supports the U.S. and Michigan constitutions.
We are at four minutes right now.
Thank you. And expressing supports for the rights guaranteed to individuals under those constitutions is not a personal feeling, nor is it up for political debate. It's actually what every single public officer swore to do under Article 11, Section 1 of the state constitution. With those two things being in there, the chief is willing to walk away from any of the claims that he has and go about his day and allow the City of Lowell to go about their business. But without doing that, those two very basic small things, he will be forced to take action to make sure that the City of Lowell understands they must defend and support those constitutions.
Five minutes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine.
Good evening. My name is Rod Romine. I heard the story of what's going on here in the city.
Just put your address, please, for the record.
Pardon me?
Address for the record, name and address.
It's 10229 Parkley Road, Middleville.
Thank you.
I'm ashamed of you people. I don't know who's who and who's what. I deal with Mike at Berry County. I deal with the stuff all the time, too. But anybody that let that man go and let him walk away like they did, you people will be held accountable. You swore an oath to the Constitution, every one of you. This man did nothing wrong. This country is going down into tyranny, and someday we're going to be looking down your eyes, I promise you. You owe a man this apology, you owe a man this man this pension, or get him back on the police force. It's as simple as that.
Thank you. All right, nobody else?
Mayor, what I do have a proposal.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I would just like to note that we did receive six additional signatures for the petitions that were read into record for Mayor Mike DeBoer and City Manager Mike Burns and the July 6th meeting council meeting.
Thank you. All right, we close it. We'll move on to whole business. Number A is the showboat, Mike.
After thoroughly reviewing this matter with members of the showboat committee, we are very close to recommending a bidder for the general contractor work for the interior of the boat. However, the fundraising efforts have been slow due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The design and specification for the showboat have been very complicated, and we have looked at a number of options to reduce costs for construction. We have looked at possibly not heating the boat. We have eliminated the redundancy for the heating, as we once discussed. Additionally, we looked at reducing the level of snowmelt or not even installing it. Further, we looked into lower-cost snowmelting option alternative, which we believe will be the most feasible and one we can implement. We've tried to minimize as much of the cost for this project as we feasibly can. However, there is concern that cutting costs too much will negatively unpick the integrity of what the community will envision for the showboat. For instance, there is a concern that not heating the boat will cause damage to the metal structure. The committee was very concerned in not doing this. The intent for designing the boat and the matter that it was implemented was done so it could operate on a year-round basis. After discussing this at length with the committee, we believe additional fundraising can be accomplished. However, we need to begin construction of the interior in short order. For example, we requested $500,000 from the Lowell Community Fund in the spring, and we received $200,000. At the time, we were told we'd come back for additional funding. We plan to apply for the next cycle of funding. That said, the committee intends to move fundraising, move forward with the sponsorships we discussed in the fall. They fully intend to continue fundraising. However, there's currently a gap of approximately $865,000 in cash on hand and estimated complete construction costs. The committee would like to ask the city to consider installment purchase financing to complete the project. While there is a risk, we believe the cost can be improved through the fundraising efforts and the revenue generated from operating events at the facility. It is still the goal that no City of Lowell tax dollar will be used to subsidize this project. As of today, this is still the case and the intent. If you recall, Lowell Arts Project saw financing to address the gap in their fundraising efforts. We can stretch the payments in five, six, or seven-year terms. We believe the city's credit rating should be able to secure a relatively low interest rate. While the efforts to have this boat 100% funded prior to construction were there, in many cases with these types of projects, it's not uncommon thing to seek financing. As I expressed before, there is a risk in not being able to produce your goal of fundraising efforts. However, I believe this is a project the community wants to see completed and would be a jewel for more years to come. We need your direction on this matter. So, I also in the budget, I spelled out what we believe all the costs, all the costs we've spent up to this point, cash in hand, and what we believe is needed to complete the project. So, I know that the showboat committee of Liz, Carol McGregor, Mark Mont, they've been working very diligently. However, you know, we're at the point now where rubber meeting the road. We think that if we do this, we should be, you know, we should be able to finance the project and be able to pay for it through fundraising efforts and through revenues.
Dick, what is that? So, can you kind of explain the installment purchase process?
Sure. It's a, as you already explained, it's a way of financing. It's an easy way to finance. You can enter into an agreement. It's a three-party agreement between the contractor, in this case, the city, and then a lending institution. And so, in return for the lender providing you the funds that you need, you assign, and you pay then the contractor. And then there is an assignment by the contractor to the lender to pay the debt service on the installment purchase. There are limitations, of course. You can't have it any longer than 15 years, although I just heard from you, Mike, you're talking probably no longer than seven.
That's what I'm thinking at this point.
It will have to come back to you. You will have to formally adopt a resolution to approve that financing. And that would occur, as you agree to proceed, would occur after you received presumably a proposal from a lending institution to lend you money. So, you would know what the terms of the financing were before you would authorize going forward.
Mike, you're looking, they're looking at $865,000 to do that?
Correct.
We're short $865,000. What's the total cost of the build out?
Total cost, for the total project, cost of $3.5 million, or $3.592,438 is the estimated cost.
Right, but we had approximately $600,000 to work with at one point, I believe was what was left after Moran shared.
Right now, we have $2.7 million cash in hand, and we've spent, at this point, we've spent about, in our contract with Moran, we've spent about $681,000.
Right, but what are we obligated to Moran already just to?
Million and a half, right around a million and a half. That's what we agreed to.
Okay, so we have $1.2 million left?
Right, we'll have $1.2 million cash in hand, yes.
And we're short $800,000. So, it's about $2 million to finish it?
Well, here's the deal. If you don't heat that boat, it's completely useless except once a year.
That is an issue.
You're never going to make your money back, and we're going to get stuck with that loan.
Right. And the problem is, too, is the intent was to build a structure that will not deteriorate.
Right.
And by heating the boat, that would cause it not to deteriorate. If we don't heat the boat, the boat will be deteriorated, and in 30 years, we'll have to replace it.
It's actually more than that because half the weekends in the summer, there's something already going on down there. So, you're going to get, without heat, 12 weeks of useful showboat time? Do we get stuck with this loan, right, if the fundraising efforts come through?
That is the risk, yes. I mean, there is definitely a risk. I'm not staying there, isn't it?
What are we looking at? Maybe Liz and the committee can get us some things. What are you looking at, additional fundraisers? To even think about coming up with $800,000?
Well, round numbers, I didn't have a calculator, but seven years, that's 123... 125, maybe. Well, that's with no interest. What kind of interest, Dick? Something like this? Is it usually?
Seven years, probably 2.5%. I would use that on the high side, maybe less than that, but use 2.5%.
Wouldn't this kind of be comparable to what you guys are looking at, Steve? 2.2 on that?
Yeah, what was the percentage was on the bond, 2.2?
Yeah, the drawdown revenue bond we're going to talk about later is 2.2% at seven years. I don't know how much different that would be than like an installment purchase agreement, but interest is very low right now.
I would imagine what the city's credit rating would be pretty similar, right, in the ballpark?
And that would get heat and coolers and just heat.
Cooling.
Both, yes.
Cooling, certainly either way, right? The heating is what is in question or not, what?
If we took the loan out, we would finish the boat completely, as designed, and ready to go, including the bathrooms.
Well, the only thing, we will only do the bathrooms this time. We will not do that whole PPW, though. We'll just do the.
Yeah, that's a whole separate.
Right, but that's a whole purpose.
Yeah, we need that boat.
Right. We got to have that.
And we, I mean, we looked at all the costs. What can we cut, cut the heating and cooling? They gave that at, oh my gosh, so much more than we anticipated. We could cut the design, the interior, but then we have an empty shell. But if it's heating and cooling, what if we do that? And I couldn't tell you the exact cost of that, but it might be $100,000, $100,000.
We were only probably saving, even if we got rid of it, we did, we looked at it, we only bought a hundred grand. We were saving.
Didn't the community fund tell you guys to come back?
They did, yeah.
So, yeah, we answered.
So, if you go with five-year loan, is that 10 community fund cycles? There's two a year?
Three.
Three a year? 15 community fund cycles.
Well, they get about $750,000.
But I'm saying, if they say, no, we're short this year, come back next year, you're not running out of time, is what I'm saying.
No, no.
But, do you have some questions? Yes, we're going to go. But we haven't asked any of the big, larger companies in Lowell at all for funding. We first thought we could do it, and what we had, and we're wrong, we can't. So, you all know who the big companies are. I don't need to make names. We are going to go back to the community fund for about $250,000. We're also going to tap into the Look and the Cable TV Fund. We do have one that is secured and it's not up in the top, but it's from a family, and at this point, I don't want to say that name. That's about $50,000. So, I, you know, given it's COVID, it's hard to know what it's going to be like out there for fundraising. But we feel like if we could buy some time, we should be able to do it. Not only that, but we should also be able to bring revenue in from the boat itself as we complete it. Again, you know, like Mike said, it is a gamble, but I don't know what choice we have.
What kind of revenue projections are you putting on?
Well, it's so hard, Greg, to answer that. We looked at a lot of numbers, and it just really depends where that sweet spot is of what we can actually wrap the boat for.
What's the high and low number, though?
Oh, I can't answer that.
The challenge, I think it's going to be difficult to produce revenue from that site. Parking is already so limited and so crowded there that people really aren't going to be able to have wedding reception and things because Graham in the wheelchair is going to be parked two blocks away. There's just a lot of challenges there to that. It's, I think these are very uncertain times, although we seem to have leveled off a little bit. This could easily spiral downward. I mean, state funding is so dependent on gasoline tax and other things that, it's coming. It's not going to stay on the flat plane that it is. We're going to see some tough times, and I just, I'm concerned. I support the showboat 100%, boy, to put the city on the hook for $500,000.
Like I said, it's a risk. I get it. I just.
The $865 includes $100,000 for a maintenance endowment?
Yes, it does.
Which makes all kinds of sense.
Sure. But it could be cut.
It could be cut.
Well, what I'm saying is, do we want to borrow a maintenance endowment?
No, there's good interest.
Borrow a hundred grand?
That's a good point.
To stick in a bank?
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay, well, there we just trimmed $100,000.
But if you take that out, and it doesn't generate the revenue, do you run the risk of not maintaining it properly and cutting years off the lifespan? You know what I mean? I agree, we should have money for maintenance. But I'm saying, if you're going to use.
I'm just trying to find a way to make it work.
Right. But if you're going to use the revenue you generated for maintenance, then we get paid back second. You know what I'm saying?
Well, I think we should put together some formal maintenance plan, what is year one, year two. We're going to have some warranty with that thing. It's built, it's going to be a gradual increase. So, you're probably looking year four or five, where you might have that kind of a maintenance schedule in the very first three or four years.
We do attempt to do that, as you request.
I think this would be a good committee of the whole topic, the showboat committee, and, what's his name, Chris? And the general contractor, and, because there's 100, I have 100 questions, and I don't want, I don't want there to be no showboat, but I don't want to end up on the hook for a loan.
Well, Moran's going to take eight weeks before it's in the water. And you're this close to getting a general, a week, two weeks?
I'm hoping, I'm hoping we can have, we had to clarify some questions with the G C this week, both G Cs and bidders this week. Hopefully, we can get those answered by the end of the week. Hopefully, we can make our recommendation as to the G C in a week.
Because I like the idea of a committee of the whole with the.
Is that it's two weeks enough time for you guys to get the committee all together and come in here for an early meeting?
And then can we have a breakdown, like what Cliff's looking at, what Dick has?
You have an email.
It's in the email.
I couldn't find.
I emailed you then.
It's a separate email from the.
Yeah.
And have we looked at this? I kind of feel like we've got a Lamborghini showboat here that is pretty, got a lot of bells and whistles. And I know we've all got dreams, and we want it as nice as it can be. Have we looked really hard at what cost can be cut?
Well, we feel like we have. I mean, you know, when it comes to the heating and cooling, I mean, it's huge. It's a huge amount of what we're looking at. You know, I want to throw it out there. I think it's about $500,000, the heating and cooling alone.
Right. Could that be added in a couple of years after the money is raised?
You know, we did talk about that.
We did.
We did talk about that, and you would want to set up some things in there to allow that down the road.
Right.
So, we did talk about that.
Which just means, you know, you wouldn't be using it. I mean, we still could use all the sugar, but.
It'll be like the old boat.
Correct. Yes, correct.
Freezing cold sand blocks and.
I got married in there. It was cold, but there was a heater. I don't see a breakdown on the heating and cooling.
No, that's in the, like, the deal from the contractor.
There's maybe a selective general contractor, and if Lou is here and all these other people and Chris is here, then we can get all these questions.
Yeah, you will.
Yeah, you will. Hard to give a direction when there's so much up in the air.
Well, it'd be nice to hear what Moran has to say about it. If it sits for a couple of years with no heat in it, you know, what's that going to do, especially to the interior of the vessel? How much lifespan does it take off? And then is it, is it a dollar worth it to eliminate heat for a couple of years to let the boat shorten up six years or five years of its lifespan? You get the blue tarp on it in the winter just to keep us safe.
Well, we did cut the snowmelt out, by the way.
There's a bunch of different options for that, though, right?
Right.
There's two or three different.
We found a really, that's a lot of one of that, so we're pretty happy about that, was called Heat Trac. And it's mats that we're going to put down that have electric in them, so that'll help. That'll, I think that'll cure the problem quite nicely.
But operating costs are a lot higher.
Yeah.
Other than Lowell, like, power grid electric rates, but.
Secondhand, you know, a $25,000 system that we probably can't afford.
Any objections or concerns about the committee of the whole? Are you good with that? Sue that, and then the first August meeting?
Correct.
All right, thanks, Liz. New business, pound trip water report, Mike.
Yeah, can I just add one thing for the committee of the whole? If you could have some rough numbers on, no, for renting it out, income.
Okay.
Sorry.
Water report.
Yeah, so at the last council meeting, we were directed to bring Dave Austin here to take a look, to, he asked him to review the report as you requested and try and answer any questions you might have of us. I know myself, Dan, the water distribution, water park staff, we all looked at it. It's very costly for them to, they wanted to build their own facilities. It's definitely very costly for them to consider when they've also, you know, the report, if you noticed, it's a lot cheaper for them, I mean, you know, to just, to extend the plant or to extend the lines out of the city limits. The question is, is obviously one of the discussions we've had is 4.5 or 40 or whatever, you know, whatever we want, we want to do for that. You know, I've looked at the report, Dave's looked at the report, Dan's looked at the report, and it's really, it's really, you know, I know from Dan and my discussion, it really falls in their court as to what they really want to do. They could, you know, we could, it looks like in reviewing the report that. Um, they could, you know, we could, they, it looks like in reviewing the report that, um, they got some engineering estimates, um, on it and they did also do O and M costs for this, for the, uh, for the water and the wastewater initially. And I, I, I know I had some questions about those costs. Some of the, especially the personnel costs seemed very low to me that they had estimated in the study. Um, Dave, do you have anything to add?
Hi, uh, no, I, I think I'm looking at it strictly first from an engineering standpoint. There would be numbers, uh, some of the numbers, for instance, on operation maintenance, it's kind of a guess at this point. Um, but I don't disagree with their methodology or the estimates that they've made with regards to the flow that they need and the areas that they may need. Um, but like you said, uh, Mike, that that's really in their court. The question that I had was on the other end is if they chose to totally separate from the city, what does that do to your revenue source and what does that do to the operation of your existing system? And, uh, the recommendation that their engineering had was to, on the water end, was to expand a new system to the south and continue the existing relationships serving the north with their anticipating growth on the west end, north and west end. And that, uh, a loan is going to require that there be an expansion in existing facilities in the city just to handle that. On the sewer end, uh, as we know, the plant is running, Brian's here, the plant is running at times at, at eighty percent, which, um, so that has to be addressed anyway. Uh, and they're recommending, uh, that the township continue to negotiate with the city and try and get capacity in the plant. Whether or not you do an authority is more of a political, uh, decision and financial decision. But strictly from an engineering standpoint, we didn't see anything that, you know, was a big red flag. But it's really for them, I mean, this report was for them to see if they're comfortable in, in proceeding and negotiating with you. So, I'm happy to answer any specific questions, yeah.
Hey, I looked at this, there's a lot of information. Were they looking also to expand out beyond that? Was that covered in that cost for to hit those seven thousand residents that they got down, maybe on the main trunk, but are miles down the side road? I, I didn't see that, that cost was in there at all. They were going to give it to all the residents or just the main trunk going out the long way?
So, the way, what I understood is that their flow bases were based on these five zones that they developed, the zones one and two being on the north end and then three, four and five was down by the highway. Zone four was the industrial development they've been talking about as kind of the base. And then zone three and five were accessory developments that they would anticipate to come on. But, yeah, I don't think they anticipated beyond that, being the rural nature of the area and stuff.
Any other questions?
I was hoping, I know Dave has given us the engineering side of it, but I was looking for some financial assessment help. And I don't know if that's, you know, possible, um, how it works for the city to do this versus them. That's really, the engineering is obviously doable, but it's the financial side that, that we struggle with. And I, I don't think that any of us are qualified to read this and come up with those numbers yet. And I, I anticipated paying somebody five to ten thousand dollars to give us an hour presentation and dig into this pretty hard. Because it's a big deal in both ways.
Well, how did they react to this? Do we know?
How did they react to their study?
The township?
Oh.
Are they like fired up to thirty million bucks?
Well, they're, I think that it's obviously cheaper for them to work with us and that's in here, I don't know how much cheaper. So, obviously from a negotiating standpoint, they're going, yeah, we can build our own, we're giving you guys one last chance to work with us. They would rather work with us if they can, I'm sure, because it's more effective. And I think it benefits us some too, because we're not that far away from needing to add on to things. And if we can gain some customers to help do that, um, the four twenty-five act is out of the question with developer. They, or so their state, they would spend the extra money to build it. I think if you look at the cost difference, that he would probably pay that taxes. He'd rather just pay the cost upfront for the sewer plan and water plan. But I think we should, you know, try to look at this a little more closely from a financial standpoint if we can to help us make the best decision for the ratepayers. Um, if we do lose customers, that puts more burden on our ratepayers. If, if they do choose to do everything on their own and take away the stuff more directly from us. So, there's a lot involved here and this, this is a long-term decision. I just think it's worth paying somebody a little bit of money that is smarter about this stuff than I am and possibly others here and get some help. But they do want to, you know, move on this. This isn't something we make decisions in six months, it's something that.
So, would you like me, I mean, there's some companies out there that do this analysis. I could, I could reach out to them and see what that might be. Is that because, is that what you're looking, I mean, is that what you're looking for? I just want to make sure I understand it.
It's important to not say, fine, go do it yourself. It's thirty million because everybody who has a water bill now is going to pay more.
So I think.
Yes, I think Greg is right. I need somebody to tell me if they spend it, how much are we going to end up, we're going to end up paying.
Yeah, we're kind of, I mean, if we were negotiating tomorrow on this, we're lying.
Yeah, we're lying. But Jeremy and those guys are not going to wait till winter time to have this discussion.
Well, that's what I'm saying, could we get information up by September or in September meeting?
I can try, yeah.
I would like to see it done as quick as possible, but still done right.
I mean, they did, I think the meat and potatoes, what they need is here. I, I would think that in two weeks to four weeks, somebody should be able to come back to us. I didn't realize that Dave was going to be here to speak on this today. I kind of thought we were just starting this discussion.
I was directly at Greg Williams' work to the meeting to discuss the report.
Well, we said, let's talk to somebody about this, but Jerry and Lowell Township should be here to answer questions. You know, write down when we're going to, not to make a deal, but they can answer questions and just the more information about it.
Because part of that we asked for was, right, Dave's right, the, the engineering study all looks good. It was the cost analysis that was the other part of that equation that I still think that we need to know because we can't.
Well, I, I want to ask for Dave's last meeting because I wanted him to say, this whole thing is good and they can do it for this price? Or I don't see how, you know what I mean?
Well, our two meetings in August are pretty early, again, it's probably a month. And so that's why I mentioned something about maybe the meeting right after Labor Day or something, whatever that is. It's begin five, six weeks to put it together and have it on the agenda and get it here.
Well, I think, I think if it's in the municipal league or in one of the lists or you're going to get plenty of recommendations pretty quick.
Yeah, there's companies out there that do great studies.
Out to how? We had four or five different rate studies when we were in Franklin. And then I got them all two weeks before the meeting's done yet, so.
Yeah, there's companies.
Yeah. I, I have a hard time making a decision, it's going to affect five thousand water bills sitting here without numbers and township people. Anything else? If we're going to do a rate study and then when we get it, we'll get Greg and I or Greg or I will get the Jerry bill and see what works for Q and A, is that good?
Yeah, and I'm not sure, will a rate study, is that exactly what we want?
Yeah, I don't know what it's called.
I, I think we want to, we want some advice on what's the best decision.
You want a cost analysis?
Yeah, a cost analysis.
Do it both ways, what is the cost analysis? Whatever the effects of doing it one way or the other, to both the township and to the city.
Thank you.
I think you get somebody from outside who doesn't have a vested interest either way. Because we can present why they should come to us and they can present why they should do it themselves. You need a third party with a non-vested opinion.
And does that become a meeting of the whole topic with the Lowell Township Board?
Probably will.
I think we have to. And if we get it in time, that could be the second August. I mean, we have another committee of the whole because of this pandemic in three or four months now, so.
Then they know we're serious about it.
Yeah.
Sure, I know.
Yeah, I don't want them thinking we're sitting on our hands here because they're eventually going to have to make a decision. I think they're still.
Well, this didn't really break down the numbers for them.
As far as what their ratepayers.
Well, I mean, gave them giant ones, right?
Bad ability.
Cost of building.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think really for us, it's more the impact on our system.
If they left.
If they left, that's really, I mean, I don't know if I want to be doing a, a cost analysis for them when, you know, when we really, I think the question for us is, how does it impact our system?
Right, yeah, that's what I added.
But we need a cost analysis for going the other way. We really need both packages to make the decision.
Sure.
Then maybe they'll just pay for it.
All right, anything else on the water report?
I think it's okay, I think I got, I think I got it for a five.
Bond ordinance, Steve.
Good evening. Uh, at last week's July Lowell Light and Power Board meeting, the Light and Power Board unanimously voted to move forward with a recommendation to the city council to adopt a bond authorizing ordinance, which is included in your packet uh, for a principal amount of nine hundred ninety-five thousand dollars at a seven-year term at two point two zero percent interest, uh, through Huntington Bank. Uh, this bond is a little unique in that it's a drawdown revenue bond, meaning that Lowell Light and Power will draw down the principal amount over time as the, uh, projects at our energy center get completed. And after we draw down the money, we, we start paying interest on the amount we draw down. So the payment schedules you've seen in your packet are worst-case scenario schedules, assuming we drew down all nine hundred ninety-five thousand dollars immediately and pay interest on that nine hundred ninety-five thousand dollars over a seven-year term. The projects we anticipate doing at the energy center, we hope to complete in twelve to eighteen months. So the nine ninety-five wouldn't be drawn down immediately, if that makes sense. Uh, because this is a lot of money, um, and I did have a few questions from citizens of the community. I wanted to recap kind of the process and the timeline that's taken place thus far and look at Lowell Light and Power's debt picture from a historical perspective and then projected into the future perspective. During Lowell Light and Power's February strategic planning session, uh, in March's Lowell Light and Power Board meeting, the board had a discussion about numerous long overdue facility upgrade projects at our energy center. Um, we have a parking lot that continually floods and with our gas compressor and standby generator located near the parking lot, it's not safe to have electricity and water near each other. Um, we have a parking lot that's falling apart. We, uh, have many roof leaks and we have, uh, interior space, a control room, break room, um, offices and restrooms that have not seen any, uh, love and attention for probably twenty years, uh, since we purchased the building in the early two thousands. So there are many projects that we'd like to accomplish. Uh, at the April Light and Power Board meeting, there was discussion about moving forward with all of the projects in a shortened period of time by issuing debt instead of, you know, having these projects take place through Lowell Light and Power's capital budget, uh, over the course of three, four, five years. Uh, you know, we, we thought this would be their best route to go for a number of reasons. Uh, number one, debt is extremely cheap right now, as everyone knows, uh, due to the COVID pandemic. Moving forward with these projects today could be a positive for local contractors who have the chance to bid, uh, work at the energy center. From a logistics standpoint, uh, and a convenience standpoint, it's much easier to ask our employees who work out of the energy center. And there are eight full-time and part-time to deal with this over like a twelve to eighteen month timeframe with contractors and dust and people coming in and out instead of saying, hey, for the next four or five years, we need you to just kind of deal with this. And then finally, um, typically there is inflation and if the cost of doing these projects increases by two point two percent a year, it'll actually cost us more to complete these projects by just waiting than just by issuing debt, uh, today. So, there are many reasons the Light and Power Board thought it would be prudent to go forward with these projects immediately. Uh, so after discussion in April, the Light and Power Board said, uh, let's go forward with this approach. At the May Light and Power Board meeting, the board recommended to the city council to adopt a resolution, recommending the adoption of resolution, uh, of the intent to publish a notice of intent. It's a mouthful. Um, but really what the board did was make this recommendation at the May eighteenth city council meeting. You all, uh, moved forward with that recommendation and a notice was published in the whole ledger. And it really created awareness, um, and let the citizens know that the Lowell Light and Power and the city intended to issue bonds in total of nine hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. And citizens had the, um, right to petition, uh, the city during a forty-five day period so that the decision of whether or not to move forward with issuing bonds could be made by a vote of the people instead of, uh, a majority vote of the council. During that forty-five day period, there was no petition. So, the Light and Power Board did make the recommendation at the meeting last week to recommend to the council tonight to move forward with that ordinance. So, prior to making a decision, um, in your packet, I included a number of, uh.
Uh, Steve, can you hit those two bullet points right there underneath the seven-year term part? Because I think both of those are pretty important.
Yeah, I was going to wrap up with that, but I will do that now.
Sorry.
With, if, if approved by council, this debt would be paid for and completely principally on interest by the Lowell Light and Power Board, um, through the revenue of our ratepayers, taxpayers and the city would not be responsible for these payments. In addition, uh, issuing these bonds would not impact the city's general obligation limit to issue debt. So, the Lowell Light and Power Board does not on its own have the ability to go out and sell bonds. We have to go through city council. So, it's almost a formality, but still want to make sure the council is aware, um, you know, that it is you approving the nine hundred ninety-five thousand dollars tonight. The Lowell Light and Power Board just recommending it to the council. Does that help, Mike?
Yes, thank you.
Included in your packet, uh, are a number of graphs. And if you could turn to page one fourteen of one sixty-eight in the packet, there is a Lowell Light and Power fiscal year debt payment schedule compared to fiscal year revenue, assuming we move forward with a seven-year bond issuance. The blue bars are Lowell Light and Power's fiscal year revenue over the course of time. Back in fiscal year two thousand and four, when Lowell Light and Power, uh, issued a revenue bond for the construction of our substation over on Boz Road, the construction of the transmission line that runs down Alden Nash and the purchase of our energy facility, uh, at that time Lowell Light and Power's a five million dollar utility. And our annual debt service payments as a percentage of revenue were just under twenty-six percent. Today Lowell Light and Power is right around an eight to nine million dollar utility. And then the current fiscal year debt payments as a percentage of revenue have decreased to fifteen point six percent. So that's a forty percent prorated decrease in terms of how many, what percentage of each dollar goes towards debt. In nominal dollars, we've also had a decrease, uh, since fiscal year two thousand and four to today. We paid right around one point three million dollars in fiscal year two thousand and four. That amount has decreased slightly in fiscal year twenty twenty. If you go to the next graph, in fiscal year two thousand and four, when Lowell Light and Power did issue that revenue bond, we had outstanding debt commitments to three, um, large baseload energy resources, two coal plants and a natural gas plant. The total debt outstanding that Lowell Light and Power had yet to pay into the future was twenty-seven million dollars back in fiscal year two thousand and four. Today, our total debt outstanding.